All right, we're going to get started. We have reconvened from our closed session and by a four to zero vote with Councilmember Suen absent, the City Council authorized and directed the City Attorney's Office to defend the case of Miyamura versus the City of Elk Grove as identified by the case number on the City Council agenda. With that, we will adjourn the special meeting at 6:01 PM. And that brings us to our regular meeting. At this time, I would like to call to order the Elk Grove City Council regular meeting. Today is Wednesday, September the 11th, 2024. The time is 6:01 PM. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Tonight's meeting replays will be on Friday, September 13th at 1:00 PM and Sunday, September 15th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. Previous meetings can be viewed online at the www.elkgrovecity.org or youtube.com/metrocable14. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular notice agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the City Council for more than three minutes. If you wish to address the Council during the meeting, please complete a blue speaker card, which can be found at the back of the chamber, and provide it to Assistant City Clerk Brenda Haggard prior to consideration of the agenda item. With that, Mayor, I will move on to our roll call. And for the roll call, I will start with Councilmember Robles.
President.
Councilmember Spees.
Present.
I will note that Councilmember Suen is absent. Vice Mayor Brewer.
Here.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, excellent. Next up is our land acknowledgement. Would our Vice Mayor please assist?
Thank you, Mayor. We honor, respect, and acknowledge Elk Grove's first inhabitants, the Plains Miwok, who lived as sovereign caretakers of this land and these waterways since time immemorial. We commemorate and advocate for their descendants, the Wilton Rancheria Tribe, the only federally recognized tribe in Sacramento County, who endured because of the bravery, resiliency, and determination of their ancestors, tribal members, and leaders.
Thank you. Next up is our pledge of allegiance. I would like to invite up our Deputy Fire Chief Dan Quigle to please assist.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So today is September the 11th. And before we observe our moment of silence, this is the 23rd painful anniversary. Eight EMTs and paramedics lost their lives. 60 police officers lost their lives. 343 firefighters lost their lives. 2,997 civilians lost their lives. May we always remember this painful day. And may we always be grateful to our first responders for all that they do keeping our community safe. So please join me at this time for a moment of silence. Thank you, everyone. All right, next up is our approval of the agenda. May I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Under Section 3 of the Closed Session, there are no Closed Session items on the regular agenda, which will advance us to Section 4, our Presentations and Announcements, the first being 4.1, which is a proclamation recognizing Diversity Awareness Month 2024.
All right, assisting in this recognition, our proclamation recognizing Diversity Awareness Month, is Councilmember Sergio Robles.
All right, does anybody from the Diversity Commission want to come up?
Are there other members present?
I would actually like to invite my fellow commissioners to come up and join me. Heck, if this was a meeting, we'd have a quorum, hey? Are you guys all going to stand back there? You know, they usually ain't this shy.
And then I can go into the proclamation that we have. But I'm just super happy to see a diverse group of folks and individuals. I think this is super reflective of our community, especially now in 2024 where we're at. And I'm just super excited about this. As you can see, we have a diversity council as well, from all areas of walks of life, especially all ages. So it's super cool to see that there is a lot of civic engagement in our community and that younger folks are getting involved and that folks in a greater lifestyle as well is also getting involved. So we really appreciate it. Everyone has a unique story and that's what makes Elk Grove so beautiful, is that we get to come and collectively become a community and share those stories. And then we get to share it with everyone else in the region, whether you were from someone from overseas, whether you were across the river, right, or across a couple states. That's what makes Elk Grove beautiful, is the diversity. So I'm supposed to read the proclamation, but I don't like following the guidelines on here. But I just really want to emphasize that today we celebrate Diversity Awareness Month and it begins today. And I'm super thankful to have each and every one of you serving on our committee because each and every one of you bring a voice to Elk Grove and you make it unique. So thank you for the work that you're doing and thank you for what you continue to do. So I'll be, now therefore, let it be resolved, the City Council and the City of Elk Grove hereby proclaim September 2024 as Diversity Awareness Month in the City of Elk Grove. We encourage all Elk Grove community members, business entities, and media to participate in the activities and programs during this designated month, to take City's diversity pledge as no place for hate and to take the time to appreciate the diversity that exists within the City of Elk Grove. Signed, the 11th day of September 2024. Thank you.
Thank you so much. My name is Tina Leavode and I have the pleasure of serving as the Chair of your Diversity and Inclusion Commission. And as Councilmember Robles noted, we have such diversity among us, from our longest-serving members to our newest members, we're all really committed to doing our best to ensure that we represent the folks from our different races and cultures and sexual orientations and backgrounds. One of the things that I've always loved about living here in Elk Grove has been its diversity. One of the things we want to make sure that folks understand and realize is that our biggest event is coming up this Saturday. It's our multicultural festival. It starts at 10:00 AM and it's in our own District 56. It is an amazing event where you can experience so many different foods, performances, vendors, social agencies. I don't know if there's actually any other city within our region that has an event that so clearly represents the diversity of its community. I also want to thank every member that's standing up here as well, of some of our members who couldn't attend. I think their commitment to making sure that we do so many different activities, whether it's ensuring that we have a land acknowledgement or that we raise the pride flag. It's working on updating our code of ethics. And it's just our ongoing commitment to making sure that we represent everyone in this community well. So on behalf of this commission, I just want to thank you for your support because one of the things that makes our job easier is knowing that everyone sitting at that dais really represents it. And I say this every year and it's really true. My mama always said, "You can't just talk that talk, you got to walk that walk." And everybody at this dais, as well as the amazing city staff who support us, truly walk the walk when it comes to diversity and inclusion. So thank you so much.
Before we come down and give this to all of you, just wanted to pause here and just thank all of you. You provide just not only a breath of fresh air, but just the diversity of mindset, your lived experiences, which is so instrumental in shaping a commission like this. So I want to thank you. I know it's time away from your friends and your family. It's a sacrifice and it's a sacrifice that's not gone unnoticed. So thank you again for making our city more inclusive and just through your representation and volunteerism. We really appreciate all of you. Thank you. Will come down? Okay, so I'm going to sneak in right over here. Are we all here?
See, at least I could fit my head in between.
Here, I'm going to take this, hopefully a better picture.
Oh, thank you.
We'll put this up here.
Thank you for that.
Are we all good? We're all, okay, here we go.
Are you ready? One, two, three. One, two, three.
Thank you. Thank you again, everyone.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
All for Saturday.
All right, next up is our proclamation and recognition of Hispanic Heritage Month. And it is our great pleasure to recognize Orlando Fuentes, CSD Director, if you would like to come forward while we read this. All right, so Hispanic Heritage Month, September 15th through October 15th, 2024. Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is an official celebration of Hispanic and Latino-Americans whose ancestry can be traced back to Spain, Mexico, Central and South America, and the Caribbean. And whereas the objective is to recognize the generous, the generations of Hispanic and Latino-Americans who have positively influenced and enriched our society by celebrating the histories, cultures, and customs that illustrate the diversity of those communities. And whereas the City of Elk Grove is honored to recognize Orlando Fuentes, a resident of Elk Grove who has served on the Kasumnas Community Services District Board since 2016 and held various roles, including Board President and Director. He served on the City of Elk Grove's Multicultural Committee from 2011 to 2016, where he was a driving force in the creation of the City's multicultural festival. Beyond his work at the C CSD and City, Orlando served for 26 years in state service. And whereas in retirement, Orlando remains civically engaged, his commitment to public service remains unwavering and he continues to contribute his energy and expertise through volunteer work and active participation on various committees and boards. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby affirms and proclaims September 15th, 2024 through October 15th, 2024, as Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Elk Grove. And thanks Orlando Fuentes for his selfless dedication and tireless efforts in significantly enriching the lives of countless Elk Grove residents, fostering a stronger, more vibrant, and connected community, and encourages all residents to join in recognizing and celebrating Orlando's and the Hispanic-Latinos communities' remarkable contributions to our great city. Signed this day, September the 11th, 2024. Congratulations, Orlando.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and fellow council members, Rod Brewer, Kevin Spees, and Sergio Robles, and I would say hi to Darren Suen as well if he were here. This is like coming back to the cradle, in a sense, because I was appointed to the multicultural in 2011 and that began my public service to the City of Elk Grove. And, you know, in my professional career and in my personal activities, I've supported multiculturalism and diversity and equity and inclusion throughout my career. And it was a pleasure to bring my knowledge and experience and background in that area to the city, to the multicultural festival. And I want to thank Bernie Buenrostr, who's here in the front row, for his innumerable contributions to the multicultural festival and for being the photographer tonight. And so I thank you for this recognition. It was unanticipated, so greatly appreciated even more so that it suddenly happened. Thank you to all of you.
Congratulations. Before we come down, you want to say anything?
Yes, no. I want to pay a special homage to Orlando and to say thank you because for the years of serving with you on the Kasumnas Board was always a treat, always an honor, but definitely a privilege. And we did a lot, we did a lot of good work there and continue to do a lot of work there. And even as, during your final days, I think we ought to do everything we can to get a park or even the core named after you and someone should perform because that was the district that you serve. And your service to Elk Grove and service to the Sacramento region in general, I've seen it and should not go unnoticed. You are a lightning rod and continue to be a lightning rod for our community. So thank you and congratulations.
Thank you, Councilmember Brewer. Thank you.
Councilmember Spees.
Orlando, I want to take this opportunity to thank you because in our political world nowadays, right, there are often different people from differing sides, being rude to each other, pushing them out. But one thing that I have always appreciated about you, good sir, is that you're always welcoming. You're always generous. You're always, you know, even if, even if it's a place where I'm uncomfortable or haven't been, right? You introduce me, you treat me with respect. And again, in today's world where we can be very, very polarized, I want to thank you for having the courage to welcome me, right? And so thank you very much, Orlando.
And I want to thank you for being the, you know, the reciprocity. I mean, you're like that too and very respectful, you know, and as people say, there's more we have in common than what separates us. And that's the message, I think, of the multiculturalism. We have more in common together than what separates us. And I feel that reciprocity, like I said, about the kind things you said about me also apply to you. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Councilmember Robles.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Orlando, just thank you for your years of service and thank you for helping the next generation. It means a lot. You know, you continue to pour into different areas, not just Elk Grove, but in the Sacramento region. And you're still active, I'm still getting the emails, so I'm seeing that. And just super appreciative of all the work that you've done for our city, for our community, for the parks and rec and even beyond. So thank you. Please enjoy your retirement and have a good time.
Thank you, Councilmember Robles. Thank you.
And Mr. Fuentes, so I guess I get the final word. I too want to thank you for your years of dedication and service to our great city and the CSD. You were an ardent champion for parks and recreation and that was, you know, you've done phenomenal work representing a great board and we have stronger relationships today. And I know that you played a critical role in enhancing and strengthening those ties between the CSD and the City of Elk Grove. So appreciate all the work that you've done, particularly even with Measure E. So thank you again. And as you retire, please don't be a stranger to our city. I know that we'll continue to see each other at community events and you'll continue to serve in your own special way. So just thank you again for being such a good steward and dedicating your time, which again, you could have spent with your family and your friends, which you chose to step up and serve. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Mayor Singh Allen.
All right, we're going to come down and present this to you. Would your family like to join, family and friends?
Yes.
Family and friends are welcome to come up, please.
Who is everybody Orlando?
Yeah, you want, who do we have here?
My sister.
I think it's the first dog.
My sister and baby girl.
Nice to meet you.
My friend Martha.
Sure.
Oh, thank you.
And who's this puppy?
This is baby girl.
It's baby girl.
Baby girl.
I think it's the, is that the first dog that's ever been in our city?
Shh. One, two, three. Paparazzi.
Thank you and congratulations.
Sensitive eyes. Right? Thank you so much. Thank you, Orlando. My pleasure.
All right, next item is our Arts Commission annual update from Nan Mahon.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Which one of these? Both?
They both work.
Both, both of them? Okay. Is that loud enough? Yeah, I can hear now. Okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilman. My name is Nan Mahon and I am the chairperson for the Elk Grove Commission for the Arts. It's my pleasure every year to come and give you an update on what we have done for the last year. Before, there are five members of the Arts Commission and we meet every Thursday of the month. Our mission is to advocate for the arts in the city and to advise on art-related issues such as the Percentage for the Arts program. So before I begin, I'd like to introduce our commissioners. Cheryl Grace. Liz Irons. We have two other commissioners who are not here today, Leslie Sennifer and Sally Guttridge. So let me see. I'd like to talk a little bit about the Percentage for the Arts project. This particular money is used, is designated for public art and we are, we are in the process of two very important pieces of art. We have events of year and participate in other events. We have our own event that we put on and then of course we participate in the, in the city's Sunday Fun Day and the Festival for the Arts, which is put on by the Fine Arts Center. We will be advisory and the, well, let me keep moving this thing. I keep forgetting to move it.
That's okay.
Okay, there we are. We will be advising in the Zoo Art Plan and we also participate in any grants that are given out for art programs. This, this is almost ready. It's almost there. This is our, this will be an Old Town Plaza. It depicts the history of Elk Grove as the strawberry capital of the world, as a, as the gold miners and the Forty Niners and the, the people who, who made Elk Grove a city back before, well, actually it wasn't a city, was it? But it was, they were the founders of Elk Grove and the people who came here. So this, this piece of art depicts our history. It's called Hello, Goodbye. And it'll be installed right by the railroad tracks, right by the Old Town Plaza. Hopefully that'll be done this, in the next couple of months, I believe. It'll be done this fall. We, there they are putting the work, the frame together on it. We are also doing a sculpture, we're in the, for the new library at Elk Grove Boulevard and Waterman Road, the budget of $140,000. And we have requests, we put out a call for artists and we received 117 responses. So we have members of our commission that are sitting on that committee. That would be Liz Irons, Sally Guttridge, and Gail Hart, who is an artist, Robert Orenthal, who is also an artist, Jason Severa, artist and architect, and Jared Keller, Sacramento Public Library. They will be reviewing those 117 applications and hopefully find an outstanding piece of art. I'm really excited about that one. They'll be getting, they will be, they're going to select five finalists. The finalists are from Maine, New Jersey, New York, Washington, and California. And they will be convening next week. We'll hear the panel's recommendation at our September meeting, which is this month, and hopefully we'll bring to you in October for your approval. And some of the events that we were happy to take part in, we, we want people to know that we are there, that we are part of the community, that this is an artistic community. So we do make ourselves visible at public events such as the, the Festival of the Arts and the Sunday Fun Day. My personal favorite is Blues in the Grove. We put on a blues festival the first year. We put on a, a large musical performance every year. This one, we went, we went beyond ourselves in this one. We enlisted the help of the Sacramento Blues Society. The Elk Grove Lions came in to help and we, we were able to bring some fairly large names in the blues world to our show. We found it to be very successful. It was held at District 56. The bands that we, that we hired for us was Mick Morton's Blues Band, his big blues band, which has nine members, Marcel Smith, who is an outstanding and well-known blues singer and gospel singer here in the area of the Zidical Flames, which you may have heard of if you ever went to the Child's Jubilee, you saw the Zidical Flames there. And he's Annie Sampson, who was with, who has traveled the world with the Stone Ground Band. Bob Jones, who is a big name in Sacramento Blues. And of course, Papa Day Blues Band, who has been here for a very long time. And Gary Mendoza, who was our emcee. All in all, it was very successful and we plan to do it, we plan to repeat it with even bigger, even bigger names and a bigger audience next July.
I don't think you get any bigger names than Gary Mendoza.
I think he agrees with you.
Thank you. July 13th, right?
Here's some scenes from it. This, this band is Annie Sampson's band, I believe. Yeah, and this band is Mick Martin's band. I'd like to, to thank those of you who, I know Councilman Brewer attended. And I'd like to thank him for being there. And I hope you had as good a time as the rest of us did. Orlando Fernandez was also there. We are, let's see, what else? Oh, we are working now with, with the City Events Team on Illumination Entertainment. We want to complete the installment of the Old Town Plaza Public Art. Beautification of additional utility boxes. We'll be selecting the public art, as I said, for the, for the new library site and upgrading public art website and participate in additional events. There are a lot of, our website, our public arts website, there are a lot of pieces of art that in, throughout the city, that if you follow our, our map, you will see the different murals that, I don't know if you've seen the fence that was painted over Elk Grove, over by Discovery Church there. Then we have other such art throughout the city and our website tells you where to find those. And I think we want to thank you for the support that you give us and, and the community for supporting us. And we hope to continue. We'd like to be known as a city that, that is a go-to place, a destination for good art. And as soon as we get a fine arts center and with a theater, we'll be, we'll be able to do so much more. So, do you have any questions for me or comments?
All right, well, thank you so much for that excellent annual update. I always look forward to seeing this and all the great work that you and your fellow Commissioners do throughout the year. Any questions? I'll start to the right, comments? Councilmember Robles?
No questions, but just thank you for the work. I know that I missed the blues concert this year, but looking forward for the one coming up, so.
Well, you'll come to the next one on July the 13th.
I'll hold you to it, buddy.
I'll be there.
He's signing up to play with you.
All right, yeah, I need a bass player, yeah, okay.
Actually, we're looking for a Tex-Mex band. If you happen to know one.
This is Tornadoes Band.
Really, okay, let's, I'll start brainstorming and seeing who I can figure out, so. We're gonna be in the cable, so.
Councilmember Spies?
Thank you so much for being here. You know, I, I really appreciate all the work that all the committee is doing and reminds me of a mutual friend who I know didn't serve on the commission, Ms. Judy Tefoya.
Yes.
I always think it's important to bring up her when she's, you know, when, when the idea of arts is discussed in Elk Grove, because I know you and I spent many hours with her trying to raise the level of art here in Elk Grove. And so I just wanted to remind us all of, of her contribution. And thank the Arts Commission so much for continuing to do some really cool things. I'll be, I'll be honest, when I, you know, the, the boxes that we've wrapped with the different artists, I don't know that I was necessarily thrilled with the idea of wrapping the utility boxes. But now, when I drive around Elk Grove, I'm always on the lookout, right? And I'm always trying to figure out, okay, what's that in the style of or whose art is that, right? So I just want to thank you so much for, for giving of your time, all of the, you and all of the commission in making sure that art is a part of our daily lives. So, thank you very much.
And thank you for reminding us that Judy was, in fact, a driving force in all of this. And we, we remember her fondly.
Vice Mayor?
No, I, I thank you for, for the report, man. This is, this is really good stuff. And one of the things I, I really enjoyed of Blues in the Grove is to see so many people up dancing and having a good time and just, and even though it was over 100 degrees outside, people were just, it didn't matter. And it was, it was awesome. That's why I'm looking forward to July 13th. That's gonna be fun, especially bringing in the new acts and making it bigger and better. That's gonna be amazing. One of the other things I think that's really cool is with the work being done throughout town that you and, and the, and the committee are doing, or the commission's doing. You're identifying new artists to come into the fold. Because I know like Annie Penny, Peany. Brian, Brian Ricker from Consumas River College. There, by you catching them and meeting them and, and talking to them, what I've, what I'm also noticing is that the collaboration of, of art being installed and the collaboration of adding in facets to really honor Elk Grove's past and folding it into today's Elk Grove is amazing. And I don't, and I know that we don't give you and the commission enough credit for that. So I want to thank you because one of the things that can't be missed is the overall vision in what you as the, as the, as the Chair of the Commission and the commission itself, that you're looking at the total picture of what's, of what's good and what's best on, in terms of Elk Grove's art and seeking out people to come in and be an additional collaborative voice. So I want to thank you. Thank you for the work you continue to do in not only keeping the arts and the performing arts alive here in Elk Grove, but also reminding people of the history that the city has and, and we can embrace that as we step into the 21st century. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And just to wrap up, we want to thank you and our fellow arts commissioners for all the work that you do enhancing Elk Grove and with all the great work with visual and performing arts, it's both. So thank you for your continued work in this area and I look forward to seeing this grow in the coming years. So congratulations to all of you and thank you all for your service.
Thank you for your support.
All right, we will move on at this time to our, were there any other questions? All right, thank you.
How do you turn, oh.
Someone will get that at the next report. Thank you. All right, so next up is our public comment. We have one person signed up to speak, Lynn Wheat.
Good evening, Council. I've always supported the arts and so it was nice to hear the report tonight. But I want to talk about a different topic, especially as I'm a nurse. So I share with you a label that's on cigarettes, the Surgeon's General Warning. And it says, "Smoking causes cancer, lung cancer, heart disease, emphysema, and may complicate pregnancy." Warning: Tobacco can harm your children. This is from 2019 and we recognize with the pandemic, I can't really get newer numbers, but high school students smoking is 5.7% and our vaping has increased to 25%. 480,000 people die each year. We are a non-attainment area for pollutants. Lifetime asthma rate is 18.6. Lifetime, that's for ages under 18 and plus. And 0 to 17 is 8.1%. Active asthma rates are 7.6. So as we look at being a healthy community, and I do, I do have, let me see, here it is, it got stuck to the other ones. But our school district, Elk Grove School District, also recognizes that tobacco use in our young people is an issue and we want to be healthy in our community. So they have several prevention programs. And so they do Project Success, Friday Night Live, Club Live, and their programs for sixth to 12th grade that are in the classrooms. I am always concerned about this. And so I know sometimes mistakes can be made. And as I'm running for mayor, of course, I'm staying on top of everything. And Mayor Bobby Singh Allen, it was very disappointing for me because I don't believe you did it intentionally, but your campaign committee accepted $2,500 from RJ Reynolds. So what I'm asking you, as a former Board President of Elk Grove Unified School District and as our mayor and our leader that I'm competing against, that you return that $2,500. Because it's really, when you have $260,000, that $2,500 won't really make a big difference. And again, I know you've been really busy, you have people helping you, so you probably were completely unaware that you had received that money. So I sincerely ask and hope that you will make that gesture for our community and city and our young people. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Madam, but you should be aware that this is not the appropriate venue to discuss campaigns. This is for city business. Next up is Randy Becker.
It's been a while. Mayor, Council, staff. Over the last month or so, the state has took upon themselves to run our city through the trash. And unfortunately, we end up with a better project, a better outcome. Our own governor admits it. And unfortunately, our Attorney General is no different than a mafia boss. It's that simple. They want to turn this state into a mess because they can. But it takes true leadership and people to stand up and say, "We have a different idea. We weren't like some of the other cities in this state. We had ideas and we wanted to form our own city with those ideas." So tonight, I just wanted to say, "You guys did your job. We thanked you, but you did your job. I know that it wasn't easy. I get it. The staff did their job. Mr. Hobbs did his job. Mr. Berman did his job. It wasn't easy. But now it's time to move forward and we need to make sure that we're putting things where, where they need to go. I know the fight isn't going to be easy because of the arrogance that some elected officials have. And it's too bad. Because they can't get out of their circle." One last thing. I know it keeps popping up, but I would like the city to explain once again the $10 million. How it's formulated, how it's put together, how it's dispersed, and why. Because some keep thinking that it's a fine and/or part of the agreement and it is not. There may be some monies, but not $10 million. So I'd like that to go on the record again. Because we've got some in this city that seem to think they can't read or understand what the outcome was. Thanks once again. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. That was our final public comment. So I am going to close public comment and go on to our next agenda item.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the City Council, Jason Berman, your City Manager. Several items to report on this evening. First item is regarding the year-round shelter. So the city is planning to open a new year-round shelter for adults experiencing homelessness this fall at the Calvary Christian Center in Elk Grove, which is at 9499 East Stockton Boulevard. The shelter could operate through October 2028 with the existing lease. While the city works to identify a suitable permanent location, the program will provide compassionate care and wraparound services for up to 35 Elk Grove residents who may be having difficulty securing housing on their own. Two community member, uh, community meetings have been scheduled to share efforts underway to provide an alternative to homeless encampments and extend a hand up to those residents who need it most. Both meetings are open house style. The first one is tomorrow evening, September 12th, from 6:00 to 7:30 at the Future Shelter. And the next one is on Monday, September 16th, at the same location during the day, from noon to 1:30. You can also sign up on the city's website for updates as we have more information to share. We already talked about Diversity Month and our upcoming multicultural festival that we're all excited about at District 56 this Saturday from 10:00 to 5:00 p.m. I encourage everybody to come out for that, free admission and parking. A few other events, I'll just note with the date and, and item here quickly. Pitch Out Grove is coming up on September 19th, the Fridays in the Grove. The Sugar Skull Workshop is September 20th. Also on September 20th is Uncapped and Uncorked Event. And then we have our Cycle Quest Adventure Ride, which is September 21st. So busy weekend coming up. All the details of those events are up on our, our website. Excited to give you an update on our e-bike lending library program that's available for people to rent up to three weeks right now. We, we kicked that off just, just not too long ago and we already have 231 people who have signed up to reserve an e-bike. And so we're excited to get those scheduled, get those out riding on our trails and our roads and get people excited about the opportunity to hopefully purchase an e-bike in the future. Speaking of purchasing, we also had our voucher program, which was also highly successful. We're still working through those applications because we received, I think, over 1,700. Kayla, do you have a, is that right?
We received just under 2,000.
Just under 2,000 applications for our voucher program, so very successful. We're gonna be going through a lottery program to identify those, but really heartening to see the interest in the new e-bikes that are coming out and how they can take cars off our roads and help with, with other important climate goals of the city. Let's see, the city has partnered with Digital Ubiquity Capital to explore the expansion of the city's broadband networking connection with our Smart City Plan. As part of the effort, the city is working with Milan to conduct community surveys to better understand Elk Grove's connectivity needs, challenges, and future opportunities. Residents are encouraged to participate in an online, in an online survey, which is now available on the city's website. The survey takes approximately 10 minutes to complete and data collector will be used to explore broadband access options. Survey responses will be accepted through early Survey responses will be accepted through early October. Nearly 700 new affordable housing units will soon be move-in-ready in Elk Grove to provide opportunities to those who need it most. The city has partnered with Delilah and Poppy Grove Apartments to conduct a lottery to fill these new homes, opening this Friday, September 13. The lottery form, income eligibility requirements, and details about each of the properties will be posted on the city's website. Lottery closes at the end of the day on Sunday, October 13. And finally, Elk Grove proudly displays banners along Elk Grove Boulevard and Civic Center Drive honoring retired or honorably discharged members of the United States Armed Forces from Elk Grove, including an Elk Grove veteran that you know. In the next round of installations, submit an application on the city's website before Friday, September 20. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
All right. Thank you for that excellent update. Any questions or comments? Looking to the right, seeing none. All right, thank you. We'll go on to our next item. This time, it's our consent calendar items. I will open up public comment opportunity for consent. I don't have anyone signed up here, so I will close the public comment opportunity and look for a motion to approve our consent calendar.
Move Consent Calendar. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, item 8.1.
And item 8.1 is actually two public hearings. Consider the 98th Annexation to CFD 2006-1 for Maintenance Services and the 68th Annexation to Stormwater Drainage Fee Zone 2 for the Iron Rock Industrial Project.
There we go. Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen and members of the council. I am Cara Taylor Seaman, and I'm here for VJ Maesuria tonight to present the public hearing for annexations into the city's special tax districts. Some background and review, as you are all very well aware of. The city maintains eight special tax districts. Annexations into those districts are just a standard process for approving projects within the city. The requirements are specific for each district, and they vary according to the location of the project and the building's use. And they are all subject to rate adjustments each year. There is one item to be considered for tonight's very brief presentation, and that is the Iron Rock Industrial Project. It is the 98th Annexation into the CFD 2006-1, which is the city's general maintenance district. It is the 68th Annexation into the Stormwater Drainage Fee Zone 2 program. This project is located kind of east of Elk Grove in the southern part of the city. It's a 2.8-acre, non-residential project, and again, annexed into both of those districts. And that concludes my brief presentation. I'm available for any questions.
All right, thank you. I will declare the public hearing for CFD 2006-1 Annex 98 open and open up public comment opportunity. Let me get to the item here. I don't have anyone signed up to speak. I'll close public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing for CFD 2006-1 Annex 98 is now closed. And look for a motion.
Motion A1, second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, may I request the results of the ballot tabulation, please?
Of three possible votes, three affirmative votes were cast, authorizing the city of Elk Grove to levy a special tax at the rate of portion and describe the measure passes with more than 2/3 of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure or resolution declaring the results of the election is available for council consideration.
All right, we've got motions A2 and A3.
We can do those as one?
Indeed.
Motion A1 and A3, please. Or excuse me, motion A2 and A3.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, at this time, I'll declare the public hearing for SWDF Annex 68 open and open up public comment opportunity. No one has signed up. I'll close public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing for SWDF Annex 68 is closed and request the clerk to provide results of the ballot tabulation.
There is no majority protest of three possible votes, weighted according to the proportional financial obligation for each property. Three affirmative votes were returned. The ballot approves the proposed assessments and the proposed inflation adjustment limits described for the parcels identified in the ballot. A resolution determining levy assessments in the district is available for council consideration.
Motion B, second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, next item, 9.1.
And thus receive a presentation on the Old Town Special Planning Area Conditional Use Permit Requirements for bars, breweries, wineries, and brew pubs, and provide directions appropriate on revising the limit on the total number of CUPs allowed for such businesses in Old Town.
Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen, members of the city council. Antonio Ablog, Planning Manager, are here to present to you item 9.1, which is Old Town Special Planning Area Conditional Use Permit Requirements for bars, breweries, wineries, and brew pubs. Just some background on the Old Town SPA. This SPA was originally established by Sacramento County in 1985, and a comprehensive update was adopted by the city council in August 2005. We've had subsequent reviews and updates in 2008 to 2010, and again, in 2013 to 2014. We did have an amendment in 2018, which I'll go through next as it relates to bars, brew pubs, wineries, and alcohol-related CUPs. As adopted in 2005, the Old Town Special Planning Area Comprehensive Update only included a land use allowance for commercial convenience for restaurants and the like. As you could see, based on the land use code, commercial convenience includes restaurants, small stores, bakeries, delicatessen's, and so forth. There were no allowances for bars, nightclubs, or breweries at that time. Fast forward to 2018. We did receive inquiries from prospective businesses desiring to locate an Old Town that did not comply with that Table 2 listing because they wanted to operate as a bar or a brewery, which was not allowed in the OT SPA at the time. So staff did initiate the process to update the SPA at that time. Where we ended up, we ended up with a conditional use process within the Old Town Special Planning Area for bars, taverns, pubs, brew pubs, and similar establishments such as wineries. The way we formulated this conditional use permit requirement is based on state alcohol beverage control license types. I know there's a lot of numbers in this slide, but basically, the California ABC Beverage License Types 40, 42, and 48 are pretty much for bars and establishments of the like, where generally, food does not have to be sold. A majority of the sales do come from alcohol. And the numbers refer to the different levels of alcohol being served, where 40 would be just beer, 42 would be beer and wine, and 48 would be full alcohol sales, including liquor and distilled spirits. And then the second category would be for tasting rooms, both for beer and wineries. The Alcohol Beverage Type License 2 is for a winery tasting room, and Type 23 is for a brewery tasting room. So through that process, we established CUP process to allow those types of uses in the Old Town SPA. We did take the item forward to council. They deliberated on this. When we brought it to council, we did not have a limit on the number of CUPs allowed within the special planning area. However, in their final decision, the city council did place a limit on those conditional use permit issuances in the Old Town SPA. They did place a limit on those CUPs to three. As far as the current state of the SPA, we do have Bob's Bar. That one was considered legal nonconforming. It still is. So that's not counted within those three CUPs. So far, to this date, we have issued three CUPs for those alcohol-serving uses. The first one that was issued was for the business that's now Quatsa on Elk Grove Boulevard. The second CUP was issued for the Dust Bowl Restaurant and Brewery. And just recently, the Planning Commission issued a CUP for Elk Grove Pub, which is the old general store on the south side of Elk Grove Boulevard. They are planning to do a bar there. They may have food service, but predominantly alcohol sales from that prospective business. So as of today, those three CUPs have all been taken. We do not have the ability to issue any more CUPs for bars, breweries, wineries, or the like. While we don't have the ability to issue any more of those CUPs, we are aware of several businesses that are seeking to include alcohol sales or tasting within the OT, Old Town SPA. Some of those uses may include wine tasting facility for local wineries. We see that a business like that is a benefit to Old Town. However, we don't have the ability to issue a CUP for a business like that at this time. As far as our action recommended tonight, per your staff report, planning staff is recommending that the city council direct staff to pursue an update to the Old Town Special Planning Area that would increase the number of CUPs for those alcohol-related uses from three to six. We do have listed a couple of alternatives, which at this time, staff is not recommending. One is to lift the cap altogether. That's not something we've gone through, gone to the community with. So we don't advise just lifting the cap altogether. And the other alternative is to keep the cap at six or keep the cap at three. Again, staff does not recommend that. It would not allow us to look at some of these CPs on a case-by-case basis, since we have already issued those three. Furthermore, on the near horizon, staff is looking at beginning the process of going back out to the community to consider a comprehensive update to the Old Town Special Planning Area. If there's a desire to investigate this cap again, we could do so at that time. But increasing the cap from three to six at this time would allow us to issue a few more conditional use permits should businesses come about that we feel would be beneficial to the Old Town SPA. And with all conditional use permits, especially those for alcohol-related uses, we would continue to coordinate with the police department in reviewing and conditioning these uses. Specifically in Old Town, we'd work with the PD to ensure that increased pedestrian activity from these uses wouldn't be a danger based on the pedestrian traffic in light of the railroad crossing that exists right through the middle of Old Town. So that's our recommendation tonight, to increase the cap from three to six. If the city council provides that direction, staff would move forward with amending the Old Town SPA to that effect. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions. Should you have any?
All right, thank you. I'll start to the left. Questions, comments, vice mayor?
No, I want to thank Mr. Ablog for the report and providing the explanation of the expansion of the CUPs. Because we see more restaurants. We see more establishments coming in into town. And it's important that we work with them to help make them as successful as possible. And if it includes helping them on the conditional use permits in the context of the Old Town SPA, I think that's definitely worthy of doing. So thank you.
Any questions, comments from my right? Councilmember Spees?
Thank you, Mr. Ablog. I appreciate it. I'm in support of raising it to six. I guess, for the future, my concern isn't that six is a wrong number or a right number. I don't know if it is wrong or right, right? And so I guess what I'm asking is if perhaps we can look at some sort of mechanism that tells us what the right number actually is. And I use kind of a, not a very, it's not the best example because I don't know that it's exactly right. But when we do ABC licenses, we talk about, you know, crime in the tract, you know what I'm talking about, right? And so I'm wondering if there's any way that we can sort of automate that as opposed to it being an objective, oh, six sounds like a great number, right? Maybe the number's nine. Maybe the right number is five, and we're missing it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense. I think that was the same dilemma that council had when we first initiated this process. That's where we landed on three. What was the right number? And I guess the difficulty is really that the city is looking for Old Town to be more of an entertainment district versus your normal census tracts with the density of alcohol-related uses. We could certainly think of an approach to that. Maybe that happens as our comprehensive update to the Old Town SPA. But allowing the increase from three to six now would give us time to formulate that. Again, we initiated the process and created the CUP process back in 2018. It's taken five, six years to fill up those three. Adding additional capacity for three more would give us some room to think about a strategy for, instead of just lifting everything altogether, right sizing a limit for Old Town.
Right. And I mean, I can think of two right now that are probably in line. So six won't be a far reach, right? So I'm just trying to, you know, see if there's a way we can kind of make it a little bit easier to kind of figure out what that right number actually is, right? So anyway, but for now, I'm certainly supportive of the six. I think you're just going to run out real soon.
Yeah, and I think doing that would not only necessitate us to work with our police department, but also work with, like, Old Town Foundation and the business owners down there to figure out what's right for the district.
Yeah, absolutely. Unless we could, the CUP process would not be automatic or guaranteed.
No.
Right? But the number of CUPs that would be available. Like I said, I can think of a development on the south side of Elk Grove Boulevard and a development on the north side of Elk Grove Boulevard. They're probably right now, you know, wanting to get two of those three. So anyway, I certainly support the six, but hopefully, we can find some better mechanism in the future.
Sure.
Thank you.
Councilmember Robles?
Not so much any questions, but thank you for the presentation and support of this. I'm happy to make the motion.
Thank you for your motion. I echo the same comments offered up by Councilmember Spees in terms of what is that right number, striking that balance. So I definitely think as part of that dialogue is the comprehensive update to the Old Town SPA that will hopefully navigate and get to, probably not with certainty where that number would be, but I imagine it also to be more than this, so that we're not having to revisit this.
Sure.
But happy to support this right now, so.
I do have a motion from Councilmember Robles.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, next item, please.
And thus receive an update on the Trail Wayfinding and Signage Program and consider a resolution amending the Bicycle Pedestrian Trails Master Plan to implement the program.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. I'm Kayla Lyons, your Senior Transportation Planner. And the item before you this evening is to receive that update and adopt a resolution amending the Bicycle Pedestrian and Trails Master Plan in order to implement that program. So just some quick background on what a trail wayfinding program entails. Essentially, it's a program of signs that convey direction, destination, distance, and let you know what you'll see along trails. It really improves the user experience on the system, and it also promotes the use of trails as you come to understand ways to connect with various destinations in town. And coming up with this program was a recommendation in the Bicycle Pedestrian and Trails Master Plan that was adopted in 2021. This project will ultimately result in a wayfinding and signage reference manual. And so we'll use that to look for direction about sign design, specifications, materials, installation, location, and then maintenance. So as the design concept was being developed, we did multiple levels of community engagement. In October 2023, we released a survey to residents, and that was to seek feedback on how they currently navigate local trails and what they would like to see in terms of wayfinding. And we did receive about 200 responses on that. And then we had the designers come to the Trails Committee in February of 2024 to present the design concepts. And then we had pop-up stations over the summer. So one on the Laguna Creek Trail at Jack Hill Park, and then another at Big Truck Day. And all of the feedback that we received through these events was incorporated into the sign design. And really, I would say the overarching themes were that people wanted to see more destinations on the trail signs as they were walking or biking, so that they knew which stores and schools and things they could reach. And then really, there was overwhelming support for additional wayfinding signage throughout the system. So I'll get into the design concept here. We contracted with Corbin Design to develop the concepts. And they considered the existing signage and the character of Elk Grove and took these pieces of inspiration. So it's our sense of community. So it's our sense of community, it's the murals and art that we already have around town. It's the historic districts that we all know and love. And then how we really value the natural environment and our, and our trail system as well. So this is showing the, what the design concept looks like. So we'll have a variety of sign types. This shows the main trailhead kiosk. You can see the stone base, the panel for the map and information, ways to navigate around. And then that, the rooftop, you can see in the top corner will provide some shade and an artistic element as well on these. And then we have the trail guide signs and the mile markers. And one of the things that we've been hearing from the Trails Committee for some time is the desire to color code or identify our trails. And so we're implementing that recommendation as well. So we'll have colors based on the trail that you're on. So the Franklin Creek Trail, Laguna Creek Trail, for example, and you can see that here. And that really just gives a, a quick visual cue about where you are and confirming that you're, you're on the trail that you think. And that's especially important when you're going from the trail to an on-road connection and then jumping back on. And the materials used, they are designed to be relatively easy to maintain and graffiti resistant. We had a lot of input from our operations and maintenance team on that to consider the maintenance aspects of this. And then I'll just click through a couple more images here. The, the kiosks, you can see we'll have options that include the base and the roof and then also without the base or the roof, depending on the significance of, of the trailhead, the location and the funding available. And then these are some additional trail guide signs and mile markers. You can see that these are not significantly different than what we have around town now, but it's more of just refining, refining the signs and the information for the trail system. In terms of implementation, we are working on an initial sign location plan and a message schedule for four miles of the Laguna Creek Trail. And this will really allow us to use the new sign designs and reference manuals to determine where the signs will go, placement, types of information, that sort of thing, and really test out the manual. And then we're also working on a bicycle and pedestrian count program so that we'll be able to monitor use on our trails. And we'll use that to prioritize the next set of, of trails for implementation as well. And then I did want to note that we've been coordinating the trail wayfinding project with the city entry identification project so that we can develop a cohesive strategy for signage throughout the city. And we are anticipating that some aspects of the trail signs, such as the stone base, panel colors and the typeface, could be integrated into the final design of these signs as well. And so we're looking for, for feedback on that as well. And then the environmental analysis. So the revisions tonight are consistent with what's in the general plan now and the general plan EIR. So no subsequent analysis is required at this time. And we'll do additional sequo, sequo review at the time of the new signage installations. And then in terms of the fiscal impact, so we don't yet have a total cost estimate for the comprehensive trail wayfinding program. And that's just because we haven't identified every location where we will have signs and which size sign will be at each location. But you can see the cost estimates here for the kiosks range from 10 to 15,000 and then the smaller signs are under 1,000. And we do have $200,000 available in the current budget for installation of the initial signs. Any new signs, we would look to existing budgets to install. And then our new trail segments that are not built by the city are typically funded by private development. And so the signage would be included in there. And we would anticipate minor increases in the Public Works operating budget for maintenance. And so with that, again, the item before you is to receive an update and then amend the bicycle pedestrian and trails master plan, including adding the design intent drawings as appendix E. And that way we can point to the plan as we implement and allow us to condition development for the new signs. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you for your presentation. At this time, I will open up public comment. And we have one person signed up to speak, Lynn Wheat.
I've always supported the Trails Committee, so I thank them for their hard work and for the staff. And I really think that this is going to benefit all of our individuals living within our community that access the trails. I see them used more and more. I see people taking breaks when they're working and using the trails. So I, I was trying to think about this. I went to the event about the, the e-bikes. And they'll be using our trails and they go a little bit faster than the regular pedal bikes. And so if there's a method that we could maybe get some signs that talk about not just listing the speed, but caution, or let's be respectful of each other on the trails. Some go faster than the others, or move to the side, or, you know, notify. At least let people know that you're coming up on them. The e-bikes are pretty quiet. So if we could do something like that, I think that they could look into that and that would be really nice. But again, a great report. I'm really excited about these signs coming to our trails. Thank you.
I will close public comment. And any questions or comments? I'll start to the right. Councilmember Robles?
I just wanted to say thank you for the report. We can definitely see the detail and, and everything that has been presented, even in the design. I'm pretty excited about this. I mean, if you go and wake up on a Saturday morning, you just start seeing folks either on trails or using their bikes or walking. And it's, it's pretty neat to see that because it just shows that as a community, we're utilizing and walking and being active. I'm starting to see a lot of high schoolers take their scooters, electric scooters now to school, which is, is interesting, but also it's, it's just wonderful to kind of see that, right? So they're moving from like traditional to e-bikes. The signs are definitely going to be really well worth it and excited. And just kind of thank you for all the hard work that you've been doing.
Councilmember Spees?
Yes. So thank you for tying the trail signs to the, to the design of the entrance signs. I think, I think that's, that's much needed, right? Because then if we're not careful, we could have several designs implemented around town. And I, I really enjoyed the, the look of the, the leaves in the, in, in that as well. And what I thought was interesting, I don't, I don't, I don't know that you necessarily pointed it out, but in that, when there's a roof and it has that textured, right? I, I think it's supposed to feel as though you're standing beneath a tree, right? That is the, and I really like that. So whether that's what they intended or not, I don't know, but that's what it looked like to me. And so I thank you for that. And one of the things, you know, I'm kind of surprised that someone from Trails isn't here today. Sharon's probably at Sac Republic or something like that. But all of the improvements that we continue to see on the trails is, is great to see. I know that the Trails Committee has been advocating tirelessly and sometimes, you know, to the point of, of, uh, overzealous it feels at times, but when you look at where we were with the trails years ago and the ideas that have been had and, and where it's progressing, I think, I think we're really building out a trail infrastructure that, that Elk Grove residents can be very, very proud of and that people will come to the city and be excited to, you know, talk about, or to walk on our trails. And, and, and that'll be one of the things I think they'll go back and talk about with their families and friends about our trails. It's still building out, it's still not perfect, it's still not all completely connected. But I think one day we have a chance to get there. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you for the report, Ms. Lyons. I like the, the intentionality and how everything is consistent from the design of the signs, how they look in, in comparison to the large signs as people come into town and see the events come up. The attention to detail, as councilmember Spees says, on the use of the, of the leaves to really build in that, that motif of, of trees. It's a really, it's a really good touch. Especially as, as the, as the network begins to get put into play. And so that's really good. I really like it. I, I, I don't have any, I don't have any problems, any questions. Just want to say thank you because this is, this is, as people, as we're looking to build a connected community and even more connected community into today's Elk Grove, these are the, the small elements that tie the past with the present as we go into the future. So this is good stuff. Thank you.
All right. Thank you again. Great presentation. I loved seeing the signs, the, the program, the signage program. This is going to, again, continue to enhance our city and create that sort of, you know, sense of identity, which is, is wonderful. And our trails are an amazing asset to the city. And my family enjoys them. And I have family friends that visit who have always said great things about our trail system. So it's, it's definitely a lot of great pride with all of the work that's happening there. So thank you again. I don't have any questions, so I will look for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, please.
That'll be to receive the pension funding update and consider a resolution adopting the pension funding policy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Matt Pollan, your finance director, to give you a presentation on what we've been doing on pension costs and putting a, forth a proposed pension policy. So you may recall from when you were talking about budget this past May and June, that I believe councilmember Soon brought up the, the concept of setting a goal for ourselves as to how well we want to fund our pension system. So the rest of you concurred and this report is in follow-up to that request. So again, I've got the pension funding update and the policy to talk to you about. So as you all well know, we provide retirement benefits to our employees through the CalPERS system. And those benefits are mainly funded, as you can see from the chart here in front of you, by CalPERS investment earnings, over 56%, a third from the employer and the remainder from CalPERS members like myself. So how has CalPERS performed? CalPERS has a 6.8% investment earnings target that they set for themselves. If they exceed that, we get a credit. If they don't meet that target, we have a new debt to pay. So if you looked at one of our actuarial reports, you would see every year has, has a plus or a minus. And there are other factors, but it's mainly their investment earnings. And you can see over the last five years that they've actually exceeded their target, but three of the five years, they haven't. The five-year average is above their, their target, but three of the five years are underneath because of the volatility. So you can see basically it's because of one year in 2021 when they earned 21.3%. That's what sets them over their average. So again, it was that volatility that we're really trying to get out ahead of and manage that, those costs. So what have we done collectively to manage the CalPERS costs? We've made a lot of additional payments above and beyond what we're required to make to CalPERS, 13 and a half million. We've prepaid our unfunded accrued liability bill. So the city's bill is divided into two parts, our normal bill and our UAL bills, what, what we, we call it. And that's basically our pension debt. And CalPERS, if we don't pay that all upfront, they actually charge us interest on that payment. So we've paid that all upfront to avoid interest. We recently established and also funded a pension trust to stock money a way that we can use for pensions and grow and invest that the way that we want to and use that money when we want to as opposed to just giving it to CalPERS. So through all those efforts, our overall funded ratio is 86% as of June 30th, 2023, which puts us well towards the top of all the CalPERS agencies, where you can see the next two charts they have. It still results in a significant liability. As you can see, they're over 32 million, but we're still in pretty good shape overall. So this was as Ju, of June 30th, 2022. That's the most recent PERS report I could find. This is for our safety plans. You can see what tier we're in as compared to all of the CalPERS plans in California. So we're well-funded, in good shape, not at the very, very top, but amongst the very best. And this is the chart for the miscellaneous plans. Again, there's a few that are in tiers above us, but not very many, but we're above a heck of a lot of other people. We always say other, other entities, we always say in our CalPERS fact sheet that we're in the top 10% of all CalPERS agencies and these charts bear that out. So on our pension funding policy, so we want to propose to you that we fund all of our different plans. We have six plans, as you can see here in front of you, at a 90% ratio. We think that's a good balance between having a well-funded pension system and potentially crowding out other service needs. We could always chase a 95% goal or 100% goal, but that would mean a dollar towards pensions and not a dollar towards something else. So 90% is a good balance, I think, between those competing goals. You can see where our pension plans stand now and where we got that 32.4 million UAL from. But overall, we're, we're in pretty good shape. Some work to do. Our biggest liability, as you can see, is in our classic safety plan, our biggest and most tenured employee, safety employees, that's where we have our biggest liability. So I think to get to about 90% all other things being equal, we probably need another 10 to 12 million dollars towards the pension plans to kind of get to that, that goal. So what is the policy purport to do in addition to the 90% goal? It aims to prioritize making payments into the trust rather than giving those payments to CalPERS. We've already started to do that. You may recall that we typically have 900,000 budgeted for additional pension payments. We placed last year's 900,000, this year's 900,000 into the trust. We've got about 1.9 million in there now, so it's already starting to grow and work for us. We want to continue to contribute to that trust to let it grow. Talked about making payments towards the trust. And then really important is having enough resources in the trust so we can make that UAL payment, not from the general fund, but from the trust. So that's a really ambitious goal. I think that, that'll serve us very well because our UAL payment is around a million and a half a year. So you can imagine, you know, freeing up a million and a half general fund a year. That makes a significant difference for the city's budget and finances. So typically, where I mentioned the 900,000 that we have budgeted, as you may know, when we do the year-end budget report and the mid-year budget report, if we're identifying revenues above estimates and expenditures below estimates, we have typically used at least a portion of those towards pension costs and we plan on continuing to do that. So that's all I have for you. Happy to answer questions.
All right. Thank you. At this time, I will open up public comment opportunity for this item. I don't have anyone signed up to speak. I will close public comment opportunity. I'll start with questions or comments from my left here. Vice Mayor?
I have no questions.
Councilmember Spees?
No questions, just a quick comment. These are, this topic is probably one of those that most people probably just gloss over, oh, okay, cool, nice, right? But I think what's important to call out is that, that we are in, in far better position than most. That's because of the work that you and the rest of staff has done in keeping us in a, in a good fiscal policy. I've said it before, I'll say, I'll say it again, it's, it's not by accident, right? It's with a purposeful thought. And so I want to, to let you know that while it isn't the most exciting topic to discuss, when, when, when folks look at, you know, the health of a city and they look at the finances, you know, your unfunded liabilities are a very important part of that picture. And I'm really glad to see that we're looking forward in, in making that an even better position. So thank you to you and thank you to everyone else in, in finance. And Jason, I, I think this is a really good thing. So thank you so much.
Councilmember Robles?
Not too much on the questions bar, but just thank you for all the work you've been doing.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Ditto. Councilmember Spees's comments on our strong fiscal health. Again, I know most cities can't say that. So thank you. Thank you for all the tremendous work that your department does and of course, our city manager and the entire team. So thank you again. With that, I will look for a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Very good. Next item, please.
Let's consider an ordinance amending Elk Grove Municipal Code, Chapter 3.42, Contracts and Purchasing, and resolution ratifying certain contracts and purchases authorized by the city manager.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Matt Pollan. Again, I am not Joe Simone, but Joe, Joe could not make it tonight. So I'm, I'm standing in for him. So what we've got before you is a cleanup item to amend some portions of the Elk Grove Municipal Code that we should have brought for you in front of you about a year ago when we increased the city manager's purchasing authority. And we were asking you to adopt a resolution ratifying a number of contracts that the city manager has approved under that increased authority since then. So you may recall that we did a purchasing review, our internal auditor did a purchasing review about a year ago. And one of the, their recommendations was that we look at our delegation authority. It was low compared to our neighboring agencies. So we brought a recommendation towards you about a year ago to increase the city manager's authority entering the contracts from 50,000 to 100,000. And you approved that authority. But a couple of months ago, we were looking at a staff report and then we noted- But a couple of months ago, we were looking at a staff report, and then we noticed that prompted a bunch of questions, and we noticed that there were a few sections of the municipal code that still reference the city council approving contracts of 50,000 and above, so we need to clean that up to conform with the action that you took last October. And here you can see the text from changing it from 50,000 for the city council to over 100,000 and adding in the city manager to be up to 100,000. So since then, let's see, oh, we also have some other cleanup of the municipal code as well for rejection of bids, the same kind of concept with the 50,000, 100,000 delineation between the manager and council. I also mentioned that there were a number of contracts that the city manager has awarded under his new $100,000 authority. We want to bring those forward to you just to be clean and to have all those contracts So again, our recommendation is to adopt the ordinance amending the Elk Grove Municipal Code and adopt the reso ratifying those contracts that have been approved since the city manager's authority was increased. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. At this time, I'll open up public comment. Nobody has signed up to speak. I'll close public comment. Any questions or comments? I'm looking to the right here, seeing none to the left?
No.
All right, I will look for motions one and two.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, next item, council comments, reports, future agenda items. We'll start with our Vice Mayor, anything to report?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Spees?
STA tomorrow, see you there, 1:30.
Can't wait. Councilmember Robles?
Nothing to report, but as we go home and as we say goodnight to our relatives, that we would hold and honor the memory of those who were lost 23 years ago, so.
Thank you. I waive my report, and we will adjourn in the memory of all those we lost on September the 11th. May their memories be a blessing. Thank you.